We're gonna start with approval of minutes. So we did not have a forum last month. We have it tonight, so we need to approve the January meeting minutes and the February meeting minutes. So, but you know when everyone's had a chance to look.
January is here.
Have a corrective panel?
Yeah, no, on the January one, you correctly noted me as absent, but I did send information about.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, a couple of sentences about what happened, so.
Yes.
I was just physically absent, but I did report.
Yes, we did, we did share your information.
And on the second one, right chance, second page, there's a paragraph there, distributed to the board, you see that one?
Yes.
And then which contains some important information, important information, the word information.
Information is missing, yes, some important current information affecting our libraries.
It does inform me, right? You could fill it up, actually. And then the figure ninety-six. I thought New York.
Another one?
Yeah, New York was right of mean by approving ninety-six dollars, I mean ninety-six million.
Where was that? That was in the.
It is the same, it's the same page.
Same page.
Oh, ninety-six point one, right here, ninety-six point one.
Okay, great. Is everyone, is everyone ready for the January? We're gonna, can we get a motion to approve the January meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Great, can we get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so the January meeting minutes are approved. Can I get a motion to approve the February meeting minutes?
That's amended.
As amended, correct? Yep. Anyone that can make a motion to approve the February meeting minutes from 2022? Can I get a second? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so the February meeting minutes have been approved, thank you. And now we'll move on to regular business, starting with Frances at the WLS report.
Yes, that's right, now, there's really nothing to report that interests the board. We devoted our last meeting mainly to internal discussions, organizations, etc., committees, etc., interesting things, but further domestic, should I say. The only significant thing is that we had an important annual event, that is the Library Advocacy Day. I don't know whether the libraries were able to do it on, maybe on the second of March, from nine to ten. It was very well attended, very well attended, nearly all our representatives present, including Stuart Cousins. What impressed me most was that there was a complete meeting on the minds between us and our legislators about the importance of the library, the importance of supporting the libraries financially, and probably restoring some of the cuts that distinctly has been taken out, and the president wants probably to put in. So that, that's very nice. The support was unanimous, and that is impressive, so I think we should continue. I did an earlier meeting, when is the library, the third, which was devoted to preparation for the main advocacy day, certainly the trustees were there just to prepare the issues. And the issues discussed were, you remember that little note that circulated to the board about the budget cut and so on? So some of those issues were discussed as a preparation for the main meeting on the second of March. One thing I did make during that meeting is that we should encourage, well, I'm encouraging legislators to visit our libraries, to reinforce their support for our libraries, particularly since the construction money has been cut, let them go around and see someone think that they do. I did mention the wonderful work that's being done on the first floor, second floor, and now with that. But just, just go to New Rochelle and see what is being done, and what has been completed in Scarsdale and Greenberg and places. This will give you certain liberiness, why we need the construction money, see it for yourself. So I think that that went well, but I'll keep hammering that every time we have to try. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, excellent, and hopefully the message was received that we need to continue to approve our libraries and that they're vital, essential parts of civically. Thank you, Frances. President's report. So I often defer discussion about our strategic plan to the Special Projects Committee session, but not tonight, because I'm really, really excited that we have completed our strategic planning process and we have a complete long-term plan for 2022 to 2026. As everybody knows, this was a long process interrupted by the pandemic, and it took the dedication of the, of Tom and library staff and our wonderful committee, my colleagues, Cory, and we had Sarah on there, Sarah on my wall, who's not here tonight, it's Cory, but I want to express heartfelt thanks to everybody who was part of the process, every member of our community who took our survey. The process is described in the last page. We just got it Tuesday night, so we will be rolling out a press release announcement, we will have it on our website, and have kind of a summary page that we're preparing now, and, and start talking about what comes next, what do we do with our marching orders that have come from the community. Do you have more to add?
I also, like Whitney, want to thank everybody involved. It was truly a team effort, starting with Whitney, Cory, and Sarah. You all worked hard, long and hard, very long and very hard.
You can't deny that.
Whitney in particular was somebody who spearheaded this effort and persisted when there were moments when, because of pandemic and other times, when it sort of came to a stop. The library staff really went all in, both in the context of participating in the focus groups and reacting to the iterations of the document, and also the publicity side of it. Lisa, in particular, Itzkowitz, really, her marketing communications role in getting this, getting information out about it, and the creation of the survey, which was again a joint effort. And the community for participating in the two town hall meetings and the survey, which saw lots and lots of responses, and so.
And we would be remiss if we didn't thank our, yes, our wonderful consultants, public works partners, who led us through the process. They were quite masterful in how they, you know, helped us formulate questions and aggregate the data. There was so much data that we had had from the past. One of the things that took an extra few months, actually, was our real keen desire to connect the past strategic plan with the current strategic plan. What did we say we were gonna do from that? What did we do, and have we done, and are doing, and how can that help carry us forward and guide us along with what we know we need to do now? So there's continuity and there's integrity in the process. And of course, we value transparency, and this isn't the stop or the end of community involvement, it's just actually the beginning. So really, really excited about what's to come, and it's a, it's a really kind of a watershed moment in my time on the board, and something that I, I feel is just filled with hope and optimism and excitement, coming on the heels of Library Advocacy Day, I feel the liberiness, as you just said, Frances, it's very exciting. So that's the kind of the main thrust of what I want to talk about.
Great.
And now we will hear our director's report.
Thank you, Whitney. Just, I'm happy to say that at long last, we are starting to see increased activity levels in the building with the pandemic still obviously a threat, but maybe less of one in recent days, as witnessed by the statistics. We're seeing more and more people come back into the library borrowing, we're seeing increases in our circulation from month to month. And it's a wonderful thing, because there were moments in time when it was awfully quiet, too quiet in the building, and we're all thrilled to see that, that trend reversing itself. The staff is all ready to provide assistance, they've been working hard during these strange interim periods, but we're ready for new and enhanced activity in the building, which is a good thing. Just in terms of our state grants, as you folks know, we are still waiting on the approval of two state grants that we submitted in the previous August. One is for $347,000, it's the third floor renovation, and of course, we are looking towards a future match of $114,000 from our amazing foundation. And the second grant at the Huguenot Children's Library, it's, it's also a grant that calls for the improvement, replacement of the old air conditioning units that have been on the three levels at the Huguenot Children's Library. We will be replacing them with modern, sort of these slant, slideline units. And so, once, once this is approved, and we expect that that will happen sometime in June of this year, our legislators will make a, an announcement, there'll be a series of press releases, et cetera, and then we wait for the money to arrive at our library, which these days tends to mean a September, October time period, and then we'll be ready to move forward in that area. The second floor renovation project, you'll probably stick at me saying, we're nearly there, we're nearly done, sorry, we're nearly there, we're nearly done. We're just waiting on a few little things, actually. I know our administrative assistant is anxious to close the grants out, and we're there, because of the delays that relate to the pandemic, there are some electrical, electrical fixtures that are in the offing, we're supposed to get an update about when they will arrive in the near future. And once all of that is set, we're going to look and see where we stand financially. We're hoping there may be some monies left over, so we can do some additional improvements in the second floor, per the staff's wishes. So that's something that we're hoping to close in the near future. But if you go up there now, it looks great, it just is like a space that's been transformed, and it's, it's exciting to walk through it, because it looks so much better, and it has far more focus and purpose than it, than it did before, which before was a little bit tired, and things were located, to some degree, helter-skelter, but it's been pulled together very nicely, and we expect the same outcome when the third floor grant monies arrive, and then we start the process of ordering furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and making those changes too as well. Our, the project that we received grant money from this, the previous October, the Fire Stopping and Safety Project, is moving forward. Most recently, the architect had some investigators, so to speak, looking throughout the building, looking at the fire stopping issue, it wasn't invasive, but they were poking around and looking and taking photographs. And once that, once the information has been distilled through a report, they'll come back to us, we'll work out an implementation date when we can start working on this project too. So that's, that's exciting. I had spoken previously about a family foundation that reached out to us about some, some grant monies for a variety of projects. The conversation is continuing, however, for the first time, the representative of the family foundation will be working, visiting us next week, and so we're gonna be meeting in earnest, we're gonna be showing them the library, showing them the spaces that we are looking to, to improve, so that's exciting. Let's see. The Trusty Handbook Club, in which there have been a series of monthly meetings sponsored by the Westchester Library System for a board member, library administration, library staff, continuing education, has been, has been ongoing since last year. There will be a Zoom session on March 29th, let's see, March 29th, yes, and it will be Policies of Risk Management. And I know board members have participated, particularly Whitney, so that might be worth.
Frances too.
No, he is.
Oh, Frances, of course.
And I think Lucille has done a.
Has she done a few? So, well worth continuing.
Highly recommend, it's really interesting.
It is, it is.
Yeah, makes you feel really good about what you're doing, and this is your volunteer time, and it's.
And it's good to read the handbook as well. It's good to read the handbook as well, so that it's up.
I, I actually haven't yet. I've read the handbook, but I don't have it for you. It's like, I'm just happy to be there and listen, and I'm familiar enough with it, but yes, thank you.
Yep, it's a good program.
Yes.
I'm happy to provide an update regarding our perennially popular AARP tax prep program. The, it has been successful, more than successful, as you folks know, because of the pandemic, a smaller group of very brave volunteers from AARP have continued the tradition of providing free tax prep services to not just residents in New Rochelle, but anybody. And they are here once again, the library, but the difference is, instead of a sort of a what, first come, first served, it's now been set up to work via appointments. And unfortunately, it's been so popular that they are not taking any new appointments for the next three-week time period, they're fully booked out. They're finding that it's far more time-consuming to work the appointment, because there's a two-step process in which people arrive, they drop their documents, they have a conversation with the tax prep person, they leave, then they come back. So what was once done, it's, it's been taking, taking twice the amount of times it had previously, but we're still serving people. I believe they've served well over 300 folks, you know, which is amazing, and years past, it's been well over 1,000. And I know that they'll be serving far more than 300, but we may not hit that same number only because of logistics of the project. But the volunteers, again, they do this with no salary, they do it through the goodness of their heart, and they work with all kinds of folks, who are in different states of organization in terms of their documents, and it's, it's a great service. It's probably the service that was most missed when we, when we closed relative to programming, we had more calls about that than anything else. Let's see, what else is here? The Cure Program, the Five Town One Book Program, and Cure is short for the Coalition for Understanding Racism, is still, is moving forward. The book this year is The Son of Us, the author is Heather McGee, and there have been programs, both in person and Zoom, throughout the five-town area, including Larchmont, Maroneck, Harrison, and Rye. New Rochelle will be the last program, and we will be witnessing Heather McGee speak. We had hoped that she'd be here in person, apparently she's not really comfortable to come out, you know, on stage, face, face an audience, but she will be doing it virtually, and we will be beaming it onto our screen here, so we'll be asking people if they're interested to come to our theater and have the opportunity to hear, you know, this amazing woman talk about this, this important book. I don't have the particulars yet, we actually have a meeting scheduled early next week to go over all the specifics, but we'll be publicizing it as such.
It's a great book, highly recommend. She's an economist and like runs a thick tank, so she's, she really distills information very well. I've been reading her handbook, I've heard her book.
I, let's see, the Friends and the Foundation, and I have two other topics to discuss with you folks that may need some, some sort of action. The next issue is our friends, our amazing friends of Rochelle Public Library, continue to power through this, this pandemic, and have been beating with quite a lot of success in terms of selling material. Their financial status, which was a little precarious, has become far more secure through being open and being there and selling books to our residents, and that's a good thing. They're, they're still, because their, their volunteer staffing is still pretty minimal because of everything that's going on, they're not accepting large donations, they're accepting two small bags or two small boxes, and so, but people are still donating, and the Friends have discovered as an aspect of this pandemic, lots of people bought new books through, you know, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, et cetera, and they're donating to the, to the Friends, so there's a, really a contrary, a really good up-to-date fiction and nonfiction, if somebody's interested to hear or out there. The Foundation, of course, continues to move forward in its active, in its active way. There is a Foundation Board meeting scheduled for March 21st, and the May 12th Foundation Guardian Gala is picking up steam and moving forward. There's a, a committee that's working on the, working on all aspects of the program, sounds like it's meeting a lot of success. Fundraising and sponsorship has been really good, and I attribute that to the board, and in particular Chris Sella, who's been just amazing, working, networking to find sponsors that, to, to support the gala and ultimately support the library.
Can they repeat the dates of the next Foundation meeting and the gala date?
March 21st is the Foundation Board meeting.
Yep.
I'm not certain, they haven't decided yet if they will meet in person or Zoom, they have not had a in-person meeting since the onset of the pandemic. Chris is not certain what the, the feeling of the board is, but they'll take a poll, and I'll certainly let everybody know once, once that decision has been reached.
And then the gala is.
Gala, May 12th. So we encourage everybody to attend by a ticket, maybe get involved in another level of sponsorship, but I think it, it sounds like it's good to be a really fun event and an important event. And of course, all the money that they raised comes back to the library. The previous gala they had, the 25th, was tremendously successful, and our grant that year was nearly $150,000, and it allowed us to do all sorts of wonderful things, and it was because their gala was successful, so there's a, definitely, obviously, there's a link between success, financial success at the gala, and the monies that we accrue and are able to spread throughout the library and the community. The two other issues that I'd like to talk to you about are, first of all, an issue that's of great importance here in the building, and of course elsewhere, and that is the issue of the mask mandate. Now, currently, the library has had a mask mandate and has maintained that mandate since we reopened in July of 2020. We have never relinquished that, that, that rule, even though there were, you know, waxing and waiting moments with the pandemic. However, we're reaching a point in time where, where we think it's worth the board discussing the issue of maintaining the mandate, which is currently, all staff, all members of the public must wear a mask when they're in the facility, or looking towards changing the rule and moving towards an optional choice for staff and for members of the public, or something maybe in between. In terms of what our peer libraries are doing, my last count was that the vast majority have decided to relinquish the mask mandate and go to optional status. I think I counted 18 libraries that had engaged in, in that decision, making it optional, and three libraries, including our library, that was, that had still maintained the mandate. And I'm not sure about the other libraries, they just did not respond to the, to the poll. And of course, here in the city, the school district has chosen to relinquish the mandate. It was actually, Frances and I were at a Rotary Dinner last night with Jonathan Raymond, and he said something I thought was interesting, he said, with the mandate in place, 70 to 80% of the students are still wearing masks.
Interesting, very interesting, yeah.
So I said, what about staff? He didn't have that. But City Hall is also, has relinquished their mask mandate as well. We conducted an internal poll, thanks to Ed Roddy, who was upstairs there, and he polled the staff, both full-time and part-time, regarding their point of view, and it essentially broke up 50/50, 50 in favor of maintaining the mandate, 50 in favor, 50%, half of the staff, in favor of making an optional choice for people that are in the building. And so I think the board should talk about this option. I have to admit, I'm rather ambivalent about relinquishing the mandate, but I think, given what's going on in the surroundings, it would probably be my recommendation to, to relinquish that mandate, but still allowing all staff and members of the public to continue to mask if they choose, to provide masks for people if they come into the building and they don't have it. And I also think, no matter what we decide tonight, whether to maintain a mandate or to relinquish it, I think we need to still push the distancing that people should probably maintain, of keeping their hands clean. And also, we, Lisa, Itzkowitz and I have been sort of doing research about theaters, and the theater, we think, might fall into a different category, that perhaps of being in a theater because of the closeness of, of each other here, even with some distance, wearing a mask, maybe for the short-term future, might be, might be the way to go. We, we do know, there was an article in the New York Times, I don't know if anybody saw it, about what's going on, you know, with theaters in the city, and lots of them are still, they're, everybody's doing something different, but many are making the choice to, to mask. And there is also a news announcement today from the federal government that airports, airplanes, trains, buses, subways, that are nationally managed, are all being asked to, to wear masks because of the very close proximity. Yeah. So I'm, I'm very much open to what, to what you have to say, and I also, I know there are at least, there's one staff member here tonight who I think would like to speak, and I think we should give him a chance, and, and I'm not sure if the other staff member wants, has anything to say either, if Ed does not. So before we speak, if it's possible, could we allow, could we allow David?
We want to jump to the public discussion. Yeah, we can just, yeah, so.
I think it's good to hear, I mean, I invited all the staff to attend if they had something to say, this was the time and the place.
That's great, so we will move to public discussion now. Jump ahead, and we'll move back to our agenda.
That wasn't me.
I think you should come up on the stage.
Maybe if you want to speak in the.
So that we can keep you on the camera.
It's not gonna work.
That was, that was my stupid, my keys. You could be on the stage near the podium. Gotta maintain your matinee idle status.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is David Torres, I'm a adult services librarian here at the library. With everything going on, I came to town fairly recently in regards to the mask mandate, noticing that certain states were slowly but surely starting to drop the mask mandate. I believe it was Jersey and Connecticut, so our neighboring states. So I was curious about what was, I guess, the plan moving forward, because I said, well, if Jersey and Connecticut are dropping, then in New York will shortly follow, I'm sure if it did. One of my concerns was with the teenagers, just with if the school bus dropped, you know, a possibility of just, you know, students, I was more concerned to be honest with you, because I'm a parent of two boys, two teenage boys, just if the teenagers would have some type of an issue, and that might cause some, some friction, and teenagers sometimes, as I'm sure everyone's aware, can sometimes cause friction in the library. But we love them anyway. So I guess I wanted to come and speak before you guys, I had, had some, a bit of a prepared statement. So, since the severe spike in cases of the COVID-19 outbreak in Southern Georgia, cases have dropped dramatically, so dramatically, as I said, that the government has lifted the mask mandates throughout the state with instruments and supermarkets in the schools, with masks already being dropped. Oh, sorry. So I just also wanted to say. So I just also wanted to say, you know, to, you know, sort of, you know, this, this was a very severe situation that we've been in the last two, two years. I had COVID. I actually was asymptomatic. I found out I had it after we came out of lockdown. Someone said, oh, get sure anybody's tested. I'm like, sure, okay, why not? I'll do it for forgiveness. And sure enough, I did. Thankfully, I did pass it on to my wife and children. So about a year later, prior to getting vaccinated, I said, oh, let me see if I still had it. Still had it. Got vaccinated. My doctor said, yep, still got vaccinated, so I got vaccinated. And then we had the Omicron, right? And I'm like, good lord. So that was definitely a tough time for us. But with COVID, we can, with everything going on, with the Omicron, right? And as I said, with all these mandates being dropped, I was talking to Tony. I think we came up with the idea, right, about the poll? So the poll is down. And it came back 50/50, which, when we were talking, we were both kind of a little bit surprised by that. And I was just hoping that our staff, who were voting to still keep it, that it was understandable. You guys can still wear it. Because if you're uncomfortable, you should absolutely be comfortable coming to your job. And, you know, you can wear a mask. So after all, the mask mandate has lifted. Yeah, I, I hope that those people want to continue to wear a mask, keep wearing a mask. But for people like myself, who don't want to wear a mask anymore, it's been two years. We are nearing low. There are different levels that they've talked about. The CDC have said, yes, the high level is medium level. We're currently at a very low level, where they're saying, you know, we need to mask up. So running away, I don't mask up. I went to the New Theater this week, past weekend. Was a worry. Some people are, they're wearing a mask, and some are not wearing a mask. And Tony were talking also about some of the other lawyers in Misschester who are looking to drop the mask mandate in Greenwich, Connecticut. I was looking around, Greenwich, Connecticut has dropped their mask mandate. Rochester, New York has dropped their mask mandate. So I'm asking as a staff member, that the board consider dropping the mask mandate for employees, for patrons. It's definitely for me, with the patrons. I'm seeing more and more patrons coming with the, you know, walking in. Here's one. I asked our security, I go, how many nurses do we go through a day? He says, I'm probably about 20. So I'm gonna have 20 of us, you know, a day. And throughout the building, I see people in the corner, just completely, you know, they're putting their masks on. And at this point, I'm, as, you know, as a library, I'm used to, shh, you know. I just feel like at this point, we're not gonna walk over and just, you know, and push for anyone. He was, trust me, I was doing that back in the day, but trust me, you know. As someone who has, you know, we've all been through this pandemic, I'm just, I'm sort of tired. And, you know, I kind of just don't want to keep going off to go and say, please, watch your eyes, get close to your eyes. And we have had people come, we have been very, you know. We had a parent, I think it was Tuesday evening, who said, was complaining, Chris. And I'm sure doesn't have to wear a mask in school, and that was the act of coming here with a mask, so. So let's get it right. I just, I hope that we're able to take it into consideration. But as I said, if, if staff members who do want to continue to wear a mask, I firmly support them. I just hope that they support me, my decision to not wear a mask. Because if the mask mandate is kept in place, they get to wear their mask. I don't have that choice. I will have to wear a mask. So I just want to thank you for having me here this evening to express my opinion. And thank you for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Marjorie. Okay, so.
I think it's time to drop the mandate.
I'm on the fence on this, and I don't know, maybe it's because of what I experienced. You know, being in the food insecurity aspect. I mean, in my, in my agency, we, we have not dropped it in the sense that we've gone some, in a hybrid model where if you cannot have social distancing, or like if I'm meeting with a client in the office, we're wearing a mask. I mean, but if you're coming in for the food pantry line, you don't have to wear a mask. So it really, it really is on the circumstances. Again, I would say if we're using the theater in some way, shape, or form, I think masks should be worn in the theater. If someone's in a cubicle and a cubby upstairs, they don't have to wear a mask. I mean, it's, it's really a sense of what is the limitation? You know, we were doing social distancing at one point at the height of COVID when masks weren't even available. So I think there, there can be some kind of hybrid-esque model, in my opinion. I would say like activities or stuff or events that are happening should, should, should have masks. But if someone's here just studying, doing their thing, I mean, you, you know, you're good, you know? I, I just think there should be some kind of balance in my, in my opinion. I, right now, things may change down the line, but I, I personally think it's too, too soon to, in my opinion, to make that call right off the bat.
Optional, which I guess is dropping.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think my colleagues and David made good points and Tom as well on, kind of on all sides. I think, right, in a, in a theater environment, when you're, you're shoulder to shoulder with, with people, we may want to encourage masks. I think, I'm so sick of wearing a mask. You know, I've been wearing it, I'm so good. My kids wear them, we've been really good about wearing them. When I go into a grocery store and I'm with a bunch of people I don't know, and I can't always be distant, but, you know, I, I wear it. I'm finding more people at, at work, taking them off. And I think it's your level of comfort if people want to keep wearing them, because that makes them feel better and safer and comfortable. You know, the point is, is, you know, to keep each other safe, and it's to keep ourselves safe. But what I think we also have to remember is that when you're, when you're sick, you shouldn't come to the library. We should continue with encouraging not touching our faces. Remember, that was like the mantra of the early days, stop touching your face, wash your hands.
We keep sanitizing, I was still trying.
Oh, we will, we definitely will.
That's a good idea. I think we can, we should keep offering masks for people who feel that they need them. And I think that in general, you know, but I, I'm on the line of, you know, let people decide. And I think kids still, that 70 to 80% of kids still wearing masks.
Interesting statistic.
Is very interesting, yeah.
David had a comment.
One of the things that we, we first came back after lockdown, that we all, staff agreed with as far as just saying, is that, you know, we're constantly with the public. And, you know, coughing whatever, so, you know, all the little stations, you know, and obviously, we're all, we're keep breathing, like, overall, I'm really happy. It's like, oh, I just want to positive, like, these are definitely needed, yeah.
And I think people are more aware of social distancing. I think it's, it was frowned upon before to be on the Metro North and coughing your head off. And now it's like you have the plague. And everyone is, you know, I mean, I think it's, I think people are more conscientious of, of the impact that has on others. And so I think if we, if we decide, we should probably just vote on it. But if we decide to make, make it a mask optional environment, we just need to make, you know, the library reserves the right to encourage mask use in certain, under certain circumstances when social distancing is impossible. We also, you know, request that you not come to the library if you're sick or feeling unwell, that you continue to get tested. And obviously, we also encourage vaccination. So I don't, I don't know if we can make that statement officially, but we hope that that can help keep each other safe, so.
We can make that statement in the, in the, in the minutes. If we can, you know, just generally, in the course of a day's conversation with people, you know, encourage, encourage them, whether it be members of the public and of course, the staff. Now that they're encouraged, if they're out, they should stay home and, and protect themselves and protect everybody around them.
So I, I'll just read something that, that was shared to me, and this is the language we're, we're using in our facility. If you don't mind, I'll read it. "After careful, careful review and consideration of CDC recommendations, all clients, visitors, staff, and volunteers two years of age and older will not have to mask indoors if social distance guidelines are met. Otherwise, masks should be worn for the aforementioned, both indoors and out, and, sorry, indoors and in settings with limited space by dimension or crowded people. In addition, the rules shall not override rules imposed by the New York State Department of Health or any existing measures imposed by our funding sources."
That's great. I mean, I would just modify slightly and say we encourage masks. We're, we're social distancing, and if we're making it mask optional, it's mask optional. So we can't, I think that we can't, we can't ride both, both sides of the line. But I think, do you have?
No, definitely, it's a important, probably, presence issue at our next meeting, later this month. But my, my feeling is that there's probably a tendency to be cautious. Many of the board members are old and wise, and they might want to be more cautious, cautious. My, my only concern with all this, to wear or not to wear, that's the question business, is that it is being driven to my, by emotions and feelings, et cetera. And maybe a little bit of politics in there as well. In fact, it should really be driven by factual evidence, by the science of this policy. That's how it should be, but that's, that's not in the real world.
Well, I think that's good.
Yeah. So in a state of flux, where we are not really quite sure what's ever going to happen, I think it will come up again in the next six months or so, you never know. Or another variety. I saw something on DDC that six or seven different potential, whatever, you know, it could come up, anything, so. This animal is going to be with us for, for a long while in one form or another. So I think a little caution.
So we can make a statement that we may need to pivot again and require masks again. But right now, we are saying.
Make some recommendations.
Maybe based on science and facts and recommendations from CDC.
Exactly, right.
Yep. I think that's why, I think, making sure there's plenty of caveats, because it's true that we don't know. We, we all really, really hope that we're on.
Yeah, and people should be driven by their own gut feelings about what, how they feel. Your gut feeling is never misleading you, but if you feel that, just put it on, put it on. If you feel that, you should take it off.
If, if we go forward with this, can Dan use the word, a word that I liked, hybrid? Can we allow masks wearing the optional in the library proper, but in the theater? We, masks should be retained.
My only caution with that is, I think, I feel for the staff, and I think you're gonna, I think, assuming the numbers keep looking the way they are, you're gonna have, you're gonna have increased altercations with patrons who are not gonna, because I mean, you can go to a movie theater today, you don't wear, you don't have to wear a mask.
We want to, most places check vaccination status, still at restaurants in New York.
I think they've stopped now.
I mean, even yesterday at work, I went to get lunch in the, in the balance.
That might be true, but I'm just saying, I'm giving you my opinion. That I think, I think the staff is gonna face increased, you know, concern from patrons. And I think, I don't, I think, I think the CDC guidance is fairly clear. And I, I just don't think it's fair to put the staff in that position, in my, in my opinion.
I, I, I won't insist on that, on that rule. I just.
Oh, I'm just giving my opinion.
And I, I understand that, and I appreciate you sharing that. It, it's, I'm, I'm very ambivalent about all this, because I've been a mask supporter aware since the beginning. And, and I've always maintained, and we have never relinquished this rule since we reopened. It just seems like evident scientific information is suggesting that it's, it's not as crucial right at this moment in time, but it could change. And as far as the theater, it's not obligatory. I just, I'm really sort of introducing the conversation to see what people think.
I think it's not as crucial for vaccinated people, right? And it's more crucial for those who aren't vaccinated than those who are, you know, compromised. And that's been, that's been the information that we've been getting all along, which is where we don't know who isn't compromised by looking at people, right? And it's, if you want to come to the library and you know you have risk, or you're not vaccinated, we hope that you would wear a mask for your own sake and for the sake of others, right? But I think it's, it's a hard, it's, it's not an easy issue to be trying to sort both sides. I think we can certainly have the right to revert a decision, right, based on information. We can try it, let's see what happens in the, in the theater.
But we're saying, we're saying that, that outside of this theater, it's, we're saying it's optional, right? Is that, that's what we're saying?
But we're also potentially saying that it's also optional in the theater.
Listen, I, I have my reservations on that. Last time I was in this theater, and we got a guy coughing up a storm behind me. And I literally was like, yo, I gotta move. And that's how I feel now, that's the culture. Now, if somebody was coughing out there, I have the proximity and space to be like, get up and go over here. Over here, if you pack this theater with no mask and someone starts coughing.
We're, we're not packing yet, we're still doing it 50%.
Okay, that's an important fact.
Right. I mean, we are doing that, we are not ready to go back to 100%. And we may also.
So then that changes things. Yeah, so if we're limiting the capacity, like, like what I read, it's like if you cannot in any shape, way, or form kind of observe social distancing in a way where you have an option, you put it at 50 capacity, I don't have to sit next to someone.
No, you don't.
So that changes the scenario for me. I was looking at, like, if you have full-capacity theater, every seat and no mask, like, I, I was feeling uncomfortable.
We're, we're not ready, we're not ready to do that. We're, we're, at some point, who knows, in the next month or two months, we may say, let's bump it up to 75%. Let's go to 100% capacity. But at this point, again, the word Francis used, we all know, cautious, we're trying to be cautious and considerate of, of, of people and also careful about our own health.
Make evidence-based decisions, right? So I think hand-in-hand of mask option, optional environment with 50% capacity, I would feel comfortable with, once you start, if, if we decide 100%, then I think it would be something to review.
I will go there when we're ready.
Right, I think, yeah.
Or it's still optional, for those who are not comfortable, that they may do it.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, if we, if we decide to go, I'm okay of making a decision now of 50% in the theater at least, and, and optional, you know, throughout the building. And if we do go into 100% capacity, you can wear the masks. I mean, it's your decision now, right? You know what I mean?
And it's also, if you know, if you know it's mask optional and it's 100% capacity, it's like, I can choose not to.
You can make that decision, right?
Like, there's a lot of different avenues that we can all take. If we don't like it, or we can't come and wear a mask, and even if someone's coughing here, that we give a little protection, and we're not the worst. Lots of choices here, but I think I'm with you. I mean, it's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard choice, but we need to move on. So do we feel comfortable kind of making a vote, or do we feel like the discussion is enough?
I don't, I don't think there needs to be a vote. It could be a sense of the board that this is, this is the direction. And just to recap, so that we're all on the same page, it is the sense of the board that as of Monday, so we can have enough time to publicize and not start it tomorrow, that just wouldn't be fair. As of Monday, the wearing of masks is entirely optional for public and staff. We certainly will allow anybody, staff or a member of the public, to continue to wear a mask. We will continue to provide masks for people who are unmasked. We will continue to encourage social distancing. You know, the cleaning of hands, and we'll continue to keep the, the, the hand sanitizer product available throughout the library. And the theater will also, will also have the mask option in place. But also, we will continue to provide only 50% capacity for events.
Sounds good.
It's probably good to, Ed, if we're not, that we intend to revisit this issue regularly.
Right, we will, we'll just continue discussion as circumstances change and to change, right? Good, thank you, thanks. Good. Thank you. Thanks for everybody's thought and and time on that.
I have one other topic to talk about. It's a positive one. I think as you folks have heard, for many, many, many years, we had a volunteer, a woman named Karen Allen, who gave very generously of her time, day in, day out for, I think, well over. She was here when I started, you know, in 2006 and so and obviously before. And so Karen was attached to local history and archives. She was a person who had a great love of, of, of New Rochelle and its history and music and art and particularly opera music. She actually wrote an opera about the first African-American opera singer, prominent opera singer, who was a New Rochelle resident, Phil Bell Davis, you know, who's performed here. Sadly, Karen passed away a few years ago. But when her will was probated, we discovered that Karen remembered the library as a, as a, as in a series of requests, one being a $3,000 request across the board. And then the final part of her will called for, after all the individual requests were made to family members and organizations, et cetera, the residual amount, the remaining amount was to be divided between two organizations, the New Rochelle Public Library and the New Rochelle Public Library Friends. So that was really wonderful to discover. And so the will was probated. There was two co-executors, one of them being Barbara Davis, who was formerly our community relations coordinator and a family member in Karen's, in Karen's family. And they hired a local attorney that everybody knows, a wonderful person, Marion Sussman as well. So we went through the process of looking at the requests. And there was some language that, that asked us. And of course, Whitney knows all about this. We've been talking about it and of course, you folks in a general way. She has left us, now we hear from the attorney. In addition to the $3,000, $40,000, which is a very significant request and we're all very grateful. And the focus of the request is to go towards our local history and archives collections because again, that was Karen's focus. She actually would use her own money and purchase historical items if she saw it on eBay or Etsy or other sorts of places like that. And so the money is to be used for both, both of those areas, local history and archives. And when there are archival local history supplies, there's technology, perhaps shelvings and furniture or archive space improvements, we can use, use that money appropriately. We also would like to initiate an annual public lecture program after Karen. And it would be related to things that she loved, whether it be New Rochelle history. It might be an opera. It could be something that we knew that was near and dear to her park. And with that, there was a request made that, that the archive center, which is the processing room on the third floor, be named after her, the Karen S. Allen Archive Center. That we have some signage that, you know, that indicates in the archives area that, you know, you know, that the space has been named after her. And any other signage photographs or artwork that we, that we have that we could hang internally. Just, just to remember the, the woman who worked so hard on behalf of the library and the community and left us this nice request. We probably would like to have some sort of naming ceremony or event in which we could publicize what she has done for the library in her life. Seems very appropriate. And of course, once everything goes through, and I have some resolutions for you to approve if you do agree, that we would use the typical means of letting people know about a wonderful thing like this, a press release, a newsletter, e-blast, social media platform postings, et cetera. And we have something on our website that talks about Karen's work and her contributions. And so that's, so that's it. If you folks are comfortable with this agreement, and this is agreement that has been worked on internally with myself and David Rose, who is our archivist, who's done a wonderful job and had the box inside. I've spoken with Whitney about it. And also we used our attorney, David Shaw, as, you know, it was just important to have a legal person be involved. And I won't call them negotiations, but the conversations to make sure that it went all very smoothly, which I think it did. So David has asked me, Mr. Shaw, our attorney, that if the board is in fact in favor, there are two resolutions that need to be signed. And I'm sorry, because I'm wondering if this is Chris Zellin, who is appearing to be the notary public for a document that needs to be signed by you tonight.
Good. So while you're looking at that, Tom, I'm just gonna interject here that this.
Could I go out there for a minute?
Absolutely. Yep.
To set the rescue, Chris.
Sure. Yep. So I just want to make sure that my, my colleagues are aware that we, we will be looking more closely at our naming policy for spaces within the library. We don't have one. And it's wonderful that people hold the library so close in their hearts that they, they want to make sure that they leave something, you know, resources and their own legacy as well here, repository for all sorts of things, right? It's an honor when someone really wants to leave a part of, you know, themselves, as it were. I'm discussing just mentioning, Tom, the need.
Naming.
Correct. Yep. So just to put that B in everybody's bonnet, this is something that we're gonna be talking about more. The terms of naming, I think, are not binding in this case. And so I'm perfectly comfortable with naming a space after, after Karen Allen. And obviously, you know, I was very grateful to her, not only for the request, but for everything that she did to contribute to the, the success and vitality of the library. But we do need to have some kind of parameters in place. Can you have an area of, like, access? It's come up a lot, like late, since I've been on the board, and it seems to be increasing. There's, there are people who are interested in contributing financially to the library in some way. And then they would like to be acknowledged for that naming and that's perfectly reasonable. We need to have, we just need to have some kind of parameter that we can use to, you know, it'll just be who less or not we're gonna name. We all bring timeframes and of course, there will always be discussions and special circumstances that we can consider case by case, too. But it's been dealing with this all the time that I personally am not. But I, I work in the, in the, in the world of it somewhat at the Lake Center where we're always, you know, it's, the naming is a big deal. So I just, I want to make sure that we have that somewhere. There are options as we go forward. There aren't so many things you can name.
Exactly.
You'd be surprised though, Beth. I mean, we got the HVAC.
We have a lot of these chairs. These, a lot of these chairs through the foundation, right?
The return event for. You would be surprised at what you can come up with to name. So, so right, so there's really no end to it.
A lot of these chairs were named when they did the whole.
That's right. Yeah.
Thanks to the foundation campaign. Nearly all the chairs are, only a few left, I believe, right, Chris?
I mean, it's wonderful to do that. It's just, it's phenomenal. But it's just, it is something to make sure we have a policy about something that gives us, you know, comfort.
This is her collection.
The history floor, it has to be definitive for something. He wants to have something to reference to. And he would work with our attorney on it. I think just a baseline policy that can be, you know. Exactly.
You want a policy, please?
Sarah and Chuck.
Okay. So with that, there are these two resolutions that I am going to ask. I'll read them and I'll ask a board member to move second and then hopefully approve. First one, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes its president to sign a partial receipt and release document as presented to the board at this meeting in consideration for the payment of $40,000 to the New Rochelle Public Library from the estate of Karen S. Allen. A copy of said document shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. So I'm asking for a board member to make a motion in regards to this.
Microsecond.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. So this first resolution passes.
Thank you, folks. Next one, again, equally short. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize its president of the board to sign a donor-donor agreement with the estate of Karen S. Allen dated March 10th, 2022, as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Great. So the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next thing, Whitney, we have Chris here. I don't know how long she wants to stay, but we need. She came, she came out of another meeting.
Thank you, Chris, for being here for this.
She's our notary public on retainer. In which I need Whitney to sign and Chris to witness it. Could we do that now?
Sure. Yep.
Why, you missed it? You skipped dinner for this?
Good to know. Good to know.
Oh, are you also marching? That's good to know.
Excellent. Signing, you're witnessing. Here we go. Okay?
I have a bunch of them. I just brought, because I have a lot of them. At least two, right, for one glass of water.
So you think it's a reduced price for more?
That means two dinners instead of one.
Just two is good?
I don't know.
Should I go three's a charm?
Three's a charm. Sure.
Depends what you need. I guess. I know.
I just thought it would be better to have more than fewer if they wanted.
You want to sign all of them? There's six.
Is there six or four? Right. You don't have to sign. Six maybe is too much.
I think three is good. I did three of that one. Is there another one to sign, Beth?
There's another document that does not need to be witnessed.
It takes a little while.
This is the agreement for donation that the attorney and we have checked. And it's, does not require a notary. Yeah, of course. I have many comments.
So the terms are in here and how we are recognizing Karen are part of this agreement for donation?
Yep. We had suggested as such, and it met with your approval.
Okay. And is there an obligation to hold an event and name after Karen every year? Or is it something that we are?
It's something that we thought that we would like to do. And we're using as an example of a request that was made over 10 years ago of $100,000. There's a woman named Lillian Robbins, who in her will left us $100,000. And negotiating with the attorney, her attorney, we were able to use money to purchase the Steinway Baby Grant back there. We also used the money to remember her on an annual basis with a musical program.
I guess legally, I'm just asking, what happens if we didn't do that? Would we be in trouble? Would you say, okay, this is.
Actually, there was no request, there was no request to do an annual program, but we, no.
Oh, that's it?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Nice to see you.
No, we actually, I actually made that suggestion, David Rose and I. And we thought it would be, it would be nice with, with this money, certainly we can use it for all these internal purposes. But it would also be nice to remember Karen in a different kind of way in the context of a, a program that might feature a topic of local interest.
Yes, correct. Wonderful. Good.
Thank you, folks, for your patience for this and support.
Are we ready to move on to the reports or do you have?
I have a person I'll report. Yep.
We'll talk about operations already. Yep. Personnel.
And, yeah. The, I'm going to ask for, again, a motion and a second and, and a vote on, on these two personnel actions. One is hiring a new RLA library clerk for the circulation area. Her name is Yvonne Collier Pearson. The salary is $19.66 per hour and her start date was February 8th of 2022. And also the resignation of a library assistant, also at the circulation desk. Her name is Amanda Burgos. Her annual salary was $51,873.12. And her last day was February 2nd, also 2022.
I can make a motion to accept the hiring and resignation of the personnel.
Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So it's passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did we just hire?
We just hired.
We did, we did hire Amanda and.
It just didn't work out.
It did not work out. Unfortunately.
That's all we can say here. Thank you. Good luck to Amanda.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just a few other items. One are the, the person that we hired for the programming coordinator position, Toby Sevish, will be starting on March 16th. I won't, we won't be making a motion until she's actually started. But we're very excited about her arrival and she's already participated in a variety of events now, even though she's winding up her current employment. And extremely important is the assistant director interviews. And as you folks know, we narrowed down nine candidates to four. The nine were remote, this would be Zoom, where staff department heads were all encouraged to attend as many as they could in, in the context of a Zoom meeting with all the staff department heads, myself and Whitney. We narrowed down the search to four candidates. And this second interview process involved them coming into the library, meeting with representatives from the board, and we also had Chris Zellin sit into, which was invaluable. And then meet with staff department heads and then do a brief tour through the library. And all four candidates arrived. They did a fine job. My sense is that there are two candidates in particular that we probably want to further discuss. But we have to set up a meeting. I would like, as to follow the, the previous format, is have either a Zoom or in-person meeting with all the people that met the four candidates, Whitney and any, anybody from the board that attended, attended any of the interviews, just to talk about the candidates. And then it would be our sense that we would have a final, a third interview in which the two finalists would meet the board in an executive session, maybe for a half an hour, where the board could have the opportunity to, to either meet once again or for the first time, these two candidates. And we aren't being very deliberate in this process because the position is one that's extremely important. Being the assistant director is obviously really important. It's also important because, you know, I will not be here forever. And quite possibly that person may be my successor. And so it's even more imperative to really find the, the right match for the community, for the library and for the needs that the library has as we kind of start looking in the future at other strategic plan in place. So, so that's sort of the status there. So I think we are in really good shape. We have four good candidates and I think we can narrow it down to two really terrific candidates that the board will, you know, I think we all have a tough decision. And another good news, that the position that was recently created by the, by the civil service department, which is library to children's bilingual, has at long last closed. And so we're keeping our fingers crossed that we have really good candidates. closed, and so we're keeping our fingers crossed that we have really good candidates. And in this instance, this search, we pushed because the idea of finding a well-qualified bilingual children's librarian was important. They're, it's as a, as a, as a population, not always easily found, and when communities find a really, somebody with that skill set, it's a real desire to, to keep them and to groom them and allow them to stay in the library and maybe advance in position. So we put it out nationally, Reforma, which is the Spanish-speaking American Library Association Board, the Black Caucus of the American Library Association. They also had a job site like Reforma did. We went to the state, kind of a library community nylon managed by the New York Library Association. We did it in the, we did it here in the county through the directors, and we just sort of chaired it with people. So we're hopeful that we can somebody good in that.
Good, perfect. Do you want to mention the salary increases to?
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you, no.
Yeah, that's, I thought you were getting.
I'm really, I thank you, I forgot that.
Lucille, this is something Lucille would normally raise, given that she is the chair of the personnel committee, and her absence, Tom was willing to raise it, and we can, we will need to vote, so just.
Thank you for reminding me of that. As you folks know, we had long, long last concluded negotiation with our CSEA union, and the decision was made for the full-time staff to be awarded a two-point-five percent increase for the current fiscal year, to be paid both retrospectively and ongoing, and for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, also a two-point-five percent increase. Now, the employees that are not covered by the, by this decision are namely Jean Manning, our administrative assistant, Lisa Itzkowitz, our marketing communications person, myself, and Toby Sevish, who will be our new programming person. What I'm asking, what we're asking the board to consider is to give the, the three current employees, Jean, Lisa, and myself, the two-point-five percent increase that the, that the full-time staff has received, and also the part-time staff, and for this current year and for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, that we three also get it, as well as our new person, Toby Sevish. And Lucille was entirely in favor, Whitney was too, so I would ask the board to consider making motion to that end.
Any questions? Basically, we negotiated an agreement with our union that it is two percent, two-point-five percent increase. Tom, Jean, Toby, and Lisa are not part of the union, still deserve an increase, so this is a motion to, to group them together with the rest of the staff.
I'll make the motion.
Great. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope.
Thank you.
Great.
I'm Beypa of all of us, thank you so much.
Thank you. Excellent, good.
I was gonna say Spadaro.
Great, thank you.
As a casual footnote, I listened to the discussions on personnel, the report on personnel, I cannot help but note how consistent it is with the guidelines in the handbook and the advice that is given in there, so it's quite, quite impressive.
You know, I think, every time I do these workshops, and they're like, we need to be doing this, this, and this, I'm like, we do it, we do it, we do it. So we're, we do a really, I mean, it's very, it's like very pride inducing.
Just a casual observation.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a good one, and I, I think it's important to point that out, right, because it's like, sometimes you don't know if you're doing it right.
Sometimes you have to get to the point where you're doing it right.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, the transparency and the involvement of the trustees, et cetera, in every step of the personnel matters itself.
Very, very, very full of integrity here. That brings us to committee reports, and we will start with, happens to be in the alphabetical correct order, but it's also top of mind right now, the budget committee.
Sure, sure. So we're actually, hopefully everybody got the email that I sent out on Monday night. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget, the budget options that we looked at and what we're proposing, and we're actually going to put it to a vote tonight, correct? Yeah, unless, unless there's any fatal concerns.
So Chuck, actually, just before we get to that.
Yeah.
How about I talk about it, just because we don't have three of our board members here, do, say what you're gonna say, we will probably need to do another summary version against April.
So I get to do it twice?
You get to do it twice. But it's important, and I think if, if.
I need you to sweep it.
Yeah, because I think it's important to think about it now and, and talk about it now, and if there's any questions, get some of them out of the way, and, and then we can carry on.
They can read the minutes anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah, they can read the minutes. We'll do a quick one next time. So, so a bunch of committee met several times. As we've done in previous years, we asked, you know, Tom engaged and Jean and others engaged with the staff to understand what the, you know, what the needs were on a bottom, you know, on a bottoms-up basis, and, you know, they came to us, we had an initial discussion. And then, as we've done in previous years, we asked them to kind of put together a range of budget scenarios from sort of the, the ideal ask to, you know, what if we had to absolutely get by with a minimum, what we think we could get by with. And so that's kind of what we did, which is consistent with what we've done in previous years. And so the, the scenarios that we looked at, just to give you the bookends, ranged from on the low end, a three-point-three percent increase in the budget year-over-year, on the high end, a seven-point-six percent increase. I guess the one kind of overarching comment that I would make, our, our by far largest expense is probably will not surprise people is salaries and, and benefits for the staff. And so you already heard Tom mention that we have a new union contract that's in place which calls for a two-and-a-half percent increase this year in, in salaries, and some of the benefits payments also relate to the salary level. So that piece of it, so, so on a, you know, a baseline, you know, you're looking for the, the salaries line, a minimum two-and-a-half percent increase that we've already negotiated, so that's not, you know, that's not changeable, and that has knock-on impacts on other kind of benefit-related expenses that are not changeable. So just to keep in mind that that's sort of already been decided, and we don't, that's, I would consider that kind of a non-controllable item, as are some of the other, you know, kind of increases that come along with benefits related to increasing salaries. And those salary increases, as Tom mentioned, also apply to part-time employees and apply to the three administration employees that we just granted the two-and-a-half percent increase to. So the, the seven-point-six percent high-end budget scenario, the biggest driver of that is an additional position, a library one children's room position with, you know, with a total kind of all-in cost, including benefits, I think of ninety-two thousand six hundred and, you know, six hundred and fifty dollars or so. The discussion that we had as a committee is, obviously, the children are an incredibly important part of the library, and making sure that we have the resources that they need and the staff that they need is really important. But as we were discussing, there, there had, we just are, have recently filled a, a position in the children's section that had been vacant, and so what we agreed was, let's see how things go with that additional position filled, and Tom was comfortable with that, and then revisit whether we need the additional position, you know, in the budget cycle next year. And so, so the, so that, that was the biggest driver of the high-end scenario, and after we discussed it, we sort of agreed that we would wait and see on, on that one. There were also some, some, some adjustments to our assumptions around how much part-time employment we would need, not huge, but we, we adjusted that downward a little bit after further discussions, so we have a slightly lower, you know, allocation for the, you know, for the four-point-two percent scenario, the middle scenario, with respect to part-time employee costs. The other thing that I would mention that we talked a lot about that is maintained in the four-point-two percent or the four-point-one-nine percent scenario are increased budgets for programming and materials, and that's again based on, I think we have some funding that's fall, funding that we've gotten from another source from the programming, which is falling away, so we need to solve for that. It's twenty-thousand-dollar number that we need to solve for. And the materials budget increase is a result of, the great thing is that we have a lot of usage, and especially a lot of electronic material usage, and so we're increasing some of the budget for the electronic materials as well as, as other stuff. On the, on the low-end scenario, the three-point-three percent, which we're not going to recommend, you know, we, we cut, I think, some of the materials spending, which we, again, we don't recommend, and we, you know, we cut around the margin on some other items to get it down to a three-point-three percent sort of bare-bones scenario, but we don't think that's appropriate, and we don't think that would adequately meet, meet the needs of the library. So long story short, we are proposing a four-point-one-nine percent increase in the budget, which would not fund this new librarian position, we would revisit that next year, but would fund basically, you know, for the most part, the other asks that were, that were put forth.
Chuck, I think it would also, the four-point-one-nine budget as well as the, the three-point-three also acknowledges that the position that just came vacant with the resignation of, of the live, full-time library assistant is on hold, because we, we, we thought, you know, we just had to make that sacrifice in order to get it down to a, a number that was reasonably acceptable, we hope, to the community.
And there have been vacancies, and one will be filled, so then we will see, as Chuck said, how we'll fully put that one.
Right, that, filling the bilingual librarian, the children's librarian too, as Chuck said, we, we're hoping that it's quite possible, we'll.
Supplement with our time or other.
We may not need that new position, but time will, time will show us whether or not that's a reasonable inference.
And the other thing that I think we talked a little bit about, though is not, we didn't take any action in this year's budget, is, you know, coming, hopefully, you know, Doc Wood coming out of the pandemic, keeping an eye on usage patterns of the library and, you know, usage of electronic materials versus print materials, et cetera, and just seeing how that evolves and making sure that we're thinking about that, you know, as we budget next year. But nothing, you know, nothing, I think we won't, I mean, not nothing, because we did increase electronic materials for electronic, budget for electronic materials, but I think that's the other thing that we agreed that we needed to kind of keep an eye on as we, as we move forward, what, you know, what permanent changes we may or may not have to use to patterns.
If I could just supplement what all the, the good things that Chuck said, is, this might sound absurd, but the four-point-one-nine budget is, is a budget for nearly all of the lines are level funded, there's not increases in almost all of those lines. The drivers, as Chuck has said, and I think it's worth reiterating, are, are tied-to-obligations, contractual obligations that relate to salary, health, health costs have gone up precipitously, our payment to the New York State Retirement Plan has gone up, and in regards to salary, all those accounts that surround it regarding Social Security and Medicare, et cetera. So as, as silly as it sounds that the four-point-one-nine percent budget is austere for nearly all accounts, it is in fact a level-funded budget.
Yeah.
Other than the two areas that Chuck mentioned, which was programming monies, which, because of another source that has fallen away, we, we want to continue to program, to draw people back into the library now that hopefully the pandemic is waning away, and the materials budget. The irony is that Westchester library system, as Francis knows, is sort of reinventing itself, and it's becoming, instead of a, you pay one fee and you get everything, it's now more à la carte, but that has not, has not helped us because in terms of our subscription to streaming services through them, Canopy and Hoopla, which you folks may use, are, they're passing the cost back to us, which equals approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, so we have to make up for this reconfiguration of WLS fees by coming up with the money ourselves, which is what we're asking, you know, the board to consider.
So that's the budget, so we're proposing the four-point-one-nine percent. The other thing that I would say, and I'd be remiss, and Jean might yell at me if I don't say this, I think we, you know, we should, we think this budget is very much, you know, some past years we've had surpluses, we don't think that's likely this year, we think this is a very, you know, tight budget. And the other thing we all know, because you pick up the paper or read or whatever, we're in an inflationary environment, so, you know, we may have some costs go up that, you know, it's hard to anticipate, but so, you know, I think there's a couple, we should just keep that in mind.
I have two questions. The other category, what does that, in the summary budget, what does that cover? I don't know if I missed it. The, we're under tax related?
Other.
Yeah, what's other? What is that?
See?
I don't, I don't. It just says other?
It's like a hundred.
Hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred.
Okay. And then? So I'll just make note of that. That's the answer.
Okay, cool. And then contracted, contracted service.
I sent, I sent you the entire agenda. All you're looking at tonight is just the overall summary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have worksheets that show each one of these scenarios as separate, as separate pieces with the entire chart of the cap that was impacted by the war. That's right. You.
Right, right, to get to the, okay.
So I just can't word it out.
All right, Matt, appreciate it. And contracted services, though, based on what Chuck said, I mean, I, I've seen it consistent, besides the twenty-twenty, two thirty-six, it dropped to two thirty-three. Is that, is that, based on the inflation, is that, are we playing it safe in taking, taking that cost into consideration, or, I mean, do we have like five-year contracts with security, is it a yearly thing? Are we expecting prices to go up? Do we renew any contracts with our cleaning services, security services?
Well, that is year-to-year.
Okay.
So yes, it, it.
So we're projecting that it will stay the same?
Some will stay the same, some will go up. Now, the COVID sort of, some of our contract services, we put a lot more money in to cleaning up this building, sabotaging this building over the last couple of years, that may fall away a little bit, it was very expensive.
Right.
So we might simply save these there from covering the other areas.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks Chuck for.
My pleasure.
Thanks Jean and Tom for all the work that they've done on preparing the budget again this year.
Well, one point that Chuck mentioned that caught my attention, is he said monitoring the use of the libraries and so on, this is the point that is, is very, very important, it's kind of a regular within, within the board. And I think even at the PNB level, there's considerable discussions on that, survey and so forth.
You know, what, what does the, what will all our libraries look like following the, you know, waning of the pandemic? How, what will usage mean? Will it mean more electronic, you know, remote programming? You know, there's a lot of unanswered questions and, you know.
I think our legislators are also keeping an eye on that, because that in the long run affects the kind of help they can give us. It affects support. It's very important.
Very important, and, and our, but it's, we need to, Chuck raised that, let's keep an eye on, right, like, things haven't changed, but we should see what things could change because of usage and everything else, so it is something to monitor and make sure that we're being kind of vigilant and our responsibility for ensuring we're spending our money responsibly. Community really, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over buildings and ground because I know that we don't have a report on that, and I can skip to community relations.
So, community relations, Denise Link sent over a great report. I have it, Tom.
I want paper, I don't, I don't have.
I have, I have, we.
Oh, you do.
Thank you, Tom. So, they've been doing a, you know, I, I gotta, I gotta agree with you on that email, the response that, that you said, they've been doing a fantastic job, like, these past couple of weeks, just seeing so many people coming in, just using the social service ASH hub of services that we have here. So Job Search and Code Sessions with Rebecca Mazin continued on Tuesday. They had a successful teen job search program, where teens attendees are encouraged to bring their resumes and cover letter for review. The Help and Learning Center sessions are on the rise, with many patrons needing assistance with unemployment benefits, SNAP recertification, housing informations, and road to citizenship questions. Westchester County Healthcare Navigator, Elizabeth Blackwell, is in person every Wednesday from ten AM to two PM at, here at the Nurtur Public Library, appointments are available. They've seen an increase in students. is in person every Wednesday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at, here at the Nershel Public Library. Employments are available. They've seen an increase in students, um, for civic citizenship classes, um, uh, has made for lively sessions. Uh, they're supporting students who don't have computer access with laptops in libraries. The civic citizenship classes are virtual on Thursdays in March at 6:00 PM. Uh, you can register on our website calendar. And the Nershel Public Library Community Outreach Info Sessions at the monthly IY Mobile Food, uh, Truck Distribution, uh, Wednesday, uh, 3/9 at 4:00 to 5:00 PM, uh, which was yesterday, right? Uh, and they were doing a free book giveaway and more. They continue to lobby tabling sessions with, uh, a variety of nonprofits, Project Hope, People USA, Urban Strategies, and Head Start. It's a Head Start, new Head Start program here in Nershel across from City Hall. And the Help and Learning Center supports the transition for students who are continuing their high school KUZ, the HSC journey, uh, which has changed FYI, used to be the task, and now it's back to the GED. Testing is not open yet, but they are preparing because every testing site or facility is going through a whole transition and upgrading their systems to a new system. Um, so it's, uh, the personalized learning program with, uh, from WLS. GD Academy is, uh, is available for library patrons along with a study coach, both English and in Spanish, and a continued tutoring session with volunteer math coach on Fridays. And that is from Denise Link.
Could I just add one thing that Denise, uh, uh, neglected? She had submitted this before. The library was a recipient of, um, COVID tests, um, from the, from WLS through the county, I believe. We have, um, a thousand kits. And Denise has started the process of distributing to the mobile food pantry. Um, I think she, uh, she brought some to, to your place.
Yesterday.
So, um, we have many more and we're looking for, um, appropriate ways to distribute them to the community for people who are, you know, in positions where they're being more vulnerable. So Dan, if you need more, if you know other organizations in the community, we have a bunch.
Yeah, no, I actually spoke to Denise. She, uh, so a quick announcement on, on Denise. She's actually now Vice President of the Nershel Council of Community Service. Uh, so I told her to bring some along and see if our, um, there's actually a meeting tomorrow, Friday. She is off, but she will be there. And, um, to share with our, our partnering nonprofit organizations and families that are part, are, are, are members, uh, to see if any testings are needed. The thing about that is that those testings expire in July. So if we don't get them out and people use them, you know, we don't know any background as to like, what is the extended life shelf life of it after expiration?
Could we also help people know about it and come here and take one from the library and come watch here? So encourage people to come here.
Maybe we could put something out and, you know, people could come in and-
Save a match that, that happens to be there.
Right. They could take, you know, two or something like that.
I'll put, put a limit on it, but, you know, let people take them and use them.
No, no, Dan, you're right. We were talking about that earlier this week, Denise and I, that there is an expiration date. There's nothing worse than getting all these, these, these tests that have them just, you know-
It's been so great having that, I have to say.
Dissipating.
A lot of, a lot of peace of mind.
No, definitely. We, we received a, a box a couple of months ago and they, they expire in March. And we're like, just give them out. But, you know, people hold them just in case. It's that just in case thing. And then that just in case happens and they, and then they expire and you're like-
So if they can't hold some work of their education or that, um, everybody, you know, test on something before they go back to school, like report positive, and that's like, really, that's a smart, really smart way of doing it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so this is a market report from Lisa. It's three pages, but I'll, I'll just pick and choose. February programs, uh, crochet your own scarf, Wayne Henderson concert. We had 60 attendees for that concert. The African, African and African-American folklore with Donna Washington. Financial literacy for teens, that was postponed and hopefully will, will happen during the April break. Uh, that's all great to see that happening. Cheer yoga, um, yeah, cheer yoga. And then in March, we had a crossword coach. You have 17 people registered, uh, seven people participated. Cooking with Rinku. I personally know Rinku. Uh, Rinku is, is awesome. Uh, she is, um, uh, her day job as a CFO. And then her hobby is a, a extraordinary Indian cuisine chef. She, she creates and stores and her own herbs and spices in her own home. I mean, she's, she's phenomenal. Uh, so it's great to see that, uh, the first five weeks of cooking series in partnership with the other, uh, libraries. They hit about a max of 35 participants. It was a virtual event. Uh, people were in and out. Um, and an additional nine Nershel patrons registered for this session. And she is funny, so. Songcatchers Concert, 25 attendees, yoga and meditation. Uh, there was a, there's a waitlist of 10 and 11 people attended. So that's great. Uh, our gallery, the, uh, Nershel Arts, I know Nershel Castle Association was the AA, Nershel.
There's NERCA and then there's the Nershel Art Association.
I guess that is, right. Circle Art Show, uh, that's March 19th through March 19th. And Nershel Council of the Arts Racton Exhibit, March 20th to April 2nd, 2022. And then coming up, Global Jazz Communities All-Star Female Band, that's March 12th. 33 registered to date, Back in the Bronx, virtual event, March 13th. 169 registrants to date. A film series on the basis of sex in celebration of Women's History Month, March 17th. And Ken Moore Concert, March 26th. And, and Tom already, um, announced this, the Five Towns One Book Discussion and the Sum of Us. And summer programming, there's a partnership, um, I won't go through this, but some, some partnerships are happening with Vid, with the Executive Director Carol Littman, with some Bloom Grow Kickoff and a summer reading kickoff of, and the topic is Ocean of Possibilities. So, you know, once we get closer, we'll probably give more detail as to times, dates. And they're also even planning stuff for July already and August. So our, our marketing and community relations team is on point. So, and that is it. And this, this one I wanted to hi- highlight, um, Building Lego Program of Children's Room. So great that Volunteer New York wasn't able to partner with the library in that and just put out a post and a, an ask basically for Lego. And you guys have had a strong, uh, turnout. And the Juneteenth event, I'm glad to see the Nershel Public Library is, is involved in the planning process and also going to be involved, including family art projects to lead up to the weekend's quilt making activity and the rescreening of leveling Lincoln Music and Dance Performance. Um, that's it.
Was there something, March 20th here in the theater? I, I had randomly sat down with a woman on the train on the way from from work. And she was said, I am part of the Nershel Council on the Arts and there's like a, uh, all women's talent show.
Oh, yes, someone just sent it.
That's with NERCA, right, the Nershel Council on the Arts.
I wanted to quote that, it sounds really fun.
I think, I think it's that day. It's, you know, I'm drawing a blank because actually Lisa and I discussed it today.
Okay, well, we can-
So it's a jazz, Women's History Month. Oh no, that's March 12th.
No, there's, there's like a talent show.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a talent show for women's history.
It's Nershel Council on the Arts.
Yeah.
Isn't the 20th that?
March 20th, yeah, here.
Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarity. Great.
Are you participating in the talent?
No, but, um, juggle.
We see that.
So, good. Well, thank you for that great report. And thanks to Lisa and Denise and Tom and, um, Finance Committee. That's Corey.
Yeah.
Nothing to say on the Finance Committee. Personnel Committee, even a lot of the Personnel Committee, I think, um, we signed the MOE. We got the agreement underway. Everything is good. The bond, Policy Committee.
Um, no reports until we're near completion of final dress.
Excellent. Good. I know that we're looking at a few different policies right now. Special Projects, I, I kind of took the wind out of the Special Projects Committee's sails by talking about the future plan. At next month's meeting, I will kind of share some highlights from the plan. I don't need to do it right now. But I look forward to kind of sharing and, and, um, you know. Art of Art Street. Yes. Um, I will just quickly mention, yes, this is a special project. We will, Tom and staff and me will be beautifying, um, simply, uh, the entrance, the space on the wall above the entrance on Lot Street. Um, it's, it's, um, simple artwork. It matches the rest of the artwork around, um, the building and inside the building. So we'll look forward to that. Uh, thank you for your work on that. Move on with that? We're just going to move on with that. Yep, thank you. Um, and of course, that doesn't, um, you know, eventually down the road, we, we will be developing a kind of a public art program and make it a more robust circumstance. And we will, um, we can talk more about that, but not right now. Um, and I think that's it. We already had our public discussion. Marjorie, have one more, one more shot at it? Have anything to say?
I think it turns up, it turns up the budget, that it would be good to, and then you're probably doing this, um, to compare to the increase from last year.
Yep.
And also the impact on the average homeowner.
Yes, I love that stat. That's my favorite stat too. And it's really helpful to understand. And I think that it is important to make note of, of what we didn't do last year. Um, and the circumstances were so different last year because of COVID that it might sound like a lot, but it actually, it's like, we're making up for things that didn't happen last year also. But it's a good point. Thank you.
Right. And I think that's a valid, valid question to say, you know, how much it is.
Per household. Yeah, we do that every year. I hooked Tom about it.
And, and that's a statistic we get from the City Finance Commissioner.
Did you get that here?
Right, right. We'll go to, we'll share that with, um, with that person or the acting person. And they'll tell us that it's, um, X, that residents pay X amount of dollars. If, if this budget passes, it's an additional Y amount.
Yeah. Yep. Always, always do that because I think, um, it does put it into perspective when it, you know, sounds like a lot as compared to some other-
Couple of coffee at Starbucks.
Couple Starbucks while your friends have lattes and, you know, a scone or the lemon loaf that children love so much. Good. Um, do we have anything else?
No, for your background information, um, the, uh, WLS Board also set up a Strategy Committee, which for the last one year has been working on strategic goals for WLS. And, uh, we just completed our work. I've been chairing that committee and, uh, reported to the, uh, to the board later this month. So some of the recommendations, uh, sort of dovetail with this colorful report of yours.
Good, good, yeah.
And then there are certain areas where cooperation between the WLS and our member libraries and other partners and so on. So we're heading in the same direction with this to see this.
Yeah, and good luck in that process. Thank you, Francis. Okay, um, with that, I think we can adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Yep.
Second, second, yeah.
Good. All favor?
All right.
All, 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 any phone? Good. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.